Tacoma Park City Council to order. Will the clerk please call the rule?
Mayor Williams.
I'm here.
Councilmember Grimes. Councilmember Maye.
Here.
Councilmembers Stewart. Councilmember Siemens.
Councilmember Siemens.
Hello, good evening. Yeah, communications, I guess, with the storm has been a little broken up. Hello.
Okay, good to know you're here. Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Schultz.
Here.
Okay, Councilmember Siemens is joining us by phone this evening, and Councilmember Stewart will not be here this evening. The first item of business is a public hearing on the extension of the CDA boundaries and ordinances amending the Tacoma Park Code, Chapter 8.36, Commercial Management District, and authorizing the continuation of the Tacoma Langley Crossroads CDA. This is a public hearing to consider comments regarding the CDA request to extend the boundaries and to authorize the continuation of the organization. If approved, the code would be amended, allowing for the continuation of the CDA through June 30th, 2021, the expansion of its service area to include those commercial properties and businesses located along University Boulevard East from Ann Street through to Carroll Avenue, the restructuring of its membership, and an increase in membership fees. Is there anybody who would like to testify at this public hearing on the CDA? We will hold the public hearing open for a while since we have time until our 7:30 start for public comments and other matters, so I'll just hold the public hearing open and see if anybody comes in. And maybe in the meantime, we could turn off the microphones, and if somebody comes in, we'll turn them back on again.
Yeah, I would just say, I think it's a good idea to do that in light of the fact that we've got such inclement weather outside.
I don't know whether they're off or not. Are they off? We were holding on to see if anybody arrived to testify at the public hearing on the Tacoma Langley CDA. I'll ask again if anybody's here to testify on the Tacoma Langley CDA, the public hearing this evening. Seeing none, we will start up with our regular agenda. We're a couple minutes early, but I think we can do that, and if anybody comes in, we'll accommodate them. We'll next go to additional agenda items and agenda scheduling update. There are no additional items for this evening. I do want to point out a couple things on upcoming agendas. Next Monday, June 2nd, we'll have a 7 o'clock public hearing on the Dog Park issue. Then, the following Monday, June 9th, the council will be attending the Maryland Municipal League Conference, and so there will be no city council meeting that week. The following Monday, June 16th, we have two work session items that are of potential interest. One on potential legislative action requests that we might discuss and submit to the Maryland Municipal League, and I think there might be some additional discussion on that, just in terms of potential city legislative items as well. And then the second item is a discussion on polystyrene and compostable initiative. Councilmember Grimes has drawn up a draft and will be having a work session discussion on that item as well. And I don't have anything else to point out on upcoming meetings, except just to say that the fifth Monday of the month is Monday, June 30th, and that item is still on the agenda as tentative. We'll see what we need to do. There's the potential that we might not have a meeting on June 30th, but for now, we are. Next item is any public comments on voting items on this evening's agenda, and so that would be the frustrating ordinance amending Tacoma Park Code on the Commercial Management District and authorities and authorizing continuation of the Tacoma Langley Crossroads CDA. Does anybody want to testify on that? Okay, seeing none. Does anybody wish to? Yes. Does anybody wish to make any public comments on any non-voting items for this evening? So that would include the police department over hire policy and the discussion of the WAMADA Compact Hearing, or anything that's not on the agenda this evening. And if you'd like to testify, please come to the podium and identify yourself, and please keep your comments to three minutes. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Williams and council members. My name is Joseph Red Zavich. I live at 7050 Eastern Avenue Northwest, Washington DC, just right across the border from Tacoma Park. I can tell I have all of your attention this evening. Is it the tie I'm wearing? No? It might be this colorful sign I'm displaying right here.
It's because the tie matches the sign.
It definitely is, and that was not planned. This literally is hot off the presses. I just want to share it with you. A group of Tacoma Park, as well as Tacoma DC neighbors, are joining together, and this is a sign that you'll be seeing around the community. It says, reads "Right Size, Not Super Size Development at the Tacoma Metro." And if anyone is interested in getting a copy of the sign, you can go to www.tacomametro.com. We are a group of local citizens, as I indicated, from both jurisdictions, who are very concerned about the current proposal that WAMADA and the developer EYA have proposed at the Tacoma Metro. Since I last spoke with you at the last meeting, I'll note that the ANC Advisory Neighborhood Commission 4B did issue an additional resolution indicating their concerns with the development, including the proposed destruction of the green space buffer that faces the garden apartments on Eastern Avenue. I would encourage you as a council to consider passing a resolution of your own, reiterating your support, and also indicating some of your concerns, which have not been addressed from the last resolution which you passed. And I'll also point out that any discussion that occurs with EYA, with WAMADA, should be made in public. I just want to reiterate that. I think that's really important. We want this development to be right-sized in more ways than one, and that includes making sure that the process is done properly, that it is done openly, and that all members of the community, all stakeholders, have a place at the table. Right now, there is a public hearing that's scheduled for the 18th of June. There are many of us in the community who are concerned this will be a kangaroo court, and that the community will not be heard in terms of any changes or improvements being made to the development. You may hear from WAMADA or EYA that, well, you can just wait. Wait till the PUD process, the PUD process with the DC zoning commission. We don't feel we should have to wait. We feel that we should be heard now. Decisions are being made now, and as you all know with development, it gets more difficult to change a development once it is later in the process. So again, I want to share with you this sentiment. This is on behalf of Sabrina Eaton, who is a resident of Eastern Avenue on the Tacoma side. She couldn't be here because of the weather. She has many more of these, and we're happy to share them. Just go to our website, tacomametro.com. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Peter Kovar, and I appreciate everything Joe had to say. I'm part of the cross-border group, and I'm on the Maryland side. I live on Holly Avenue, about five houses from eastern, and so I'm in the area that will be directly affected. I've been working in various ways on this dating back more than 10 years, and certainly Mr. Mayor is familiar with that, and Seth, who we've been working with very closely, and we appreciate his help as well. I think that, Joe, pretty much, as we often say, it's all been said, but not everybody has said it yet, I want to reiterate a few of the points that he made. Number one, we're not against development at the site. In fact, we favor development at the site, but it does need to be right-sized. And of course, in Tacoma Park, people should be sympathetic to the idea that we don't want to do some sort of, anything that's going to be unhealthy. The compact hearing is coming up. It's on June 18th. I'm planning to testify. I think a lot of other people on both sides of the border are. I encourage the members of the council to also do that and/or submit a letter or a resolution. One thing that I think people may be interested to know is that there had been a letter earlier by the old Tacoma Business Association that indicated some, I think, provisional support for at least the concept of the development. That has been used by EYA to suggest that OTBA fully supports the project in its current form, and OTBA issued a clarification today that indicated that they do support development there, but they in no way have indicated any formal support or preference for the specific development that's been proposed right now. I do want to echo Joe and talk about the process. It's a unique situation in which a lot of the impact falls on a jurisdiction, namely Tacoma Park, Maryland, which doesn't really have a formal say in the process. So I think it's vital, if this hasn't happened yet, that the city requests to be made a formal party to the planned unit development process or the zoning process within the district. So I hope the council will do that if they haven't already. I also agree that there isn't a need for, and really shouldn't, there shouldn't be any closed-door meetings. I think this is something that should be done openly. I think having as many of the city officials appear at or submit statements at the compact hearing will be very important. And I guess I'm a little bit concerned, just the way the process is set up. There seems to be at each step along the way, a statement that, well, don't worry, you can fix it at the next step, and then by the time it gets there, well, fix it at the next step. And it's a little bit like the Alice in Wonderland thing where they talk about evidence following verdict. We'd like to see the evidence first, then make a decision, and not the other way around. Thanks.
Thank you.
Love it.
Hi, good evening, Mayor Williams and council. My name's John Ursiello, and I'm a curricular property owner in Tacoma Park. I came down because I'm very concerned about what might be happening at the junction, and know that there's an RFP out, which we all saw, on the property. After we announced that the Republic Restaurant was going to come into Tacoma, and the black group was doing it, there's been like a really resurgence of people looking for space in Tacoma Park. And having been on the first junction committee back 25, 30 years ago now, being, you know, always talking about how we're going to get the junction to come back alive, here's an opportunity that's finally surfaced, and I can't push this button enough, surfaced that, that I think is, we have, we have an opportunity here, and I just don't want the council to jump at something without at least looking at what's really happening. I'm proud to announce that we took over management of the first five properties on the junction, 7300 through 7308. We have landed and leased to Spring Mill Bread, which is a very, very nice bakery, bread bakery. And they're going to go into the corner store. They have stores in Gaithersburg, DC, and Bethesda, and that, I mean, was just a major factor going into the junction to get that corner set up. Next to that, we have Mad Fitness, which isn't mad. It stands for Mother and Daughter, and it's Sue Emmerman, who is a resident of Tacoma Park. She and her daughter are going to run the fitness center. And we have a Thai restaurant that's very, very interested in the space. But having already seen the mistake of the council not taking the opportunity when I offered the parking in Old Town, I've had to put in a park, a paid parking lot. Eventually, right now, it's an hour free. I'd say within six months, it's going to be a fully paid lot. It's just due to all the businesses that are coming in, we just, our businesses are suffering because they can't find parking spaces to use the business. I don't want to see that happen at a junction. You've got a parking lot there, yes, make it a paid parking lot. You can, the city could make good money out of it, but it's got to be public parking. And I know the RFP says it has to be public parking, but I just really want a voice concern that it has to be. If you want the junction to survive and be a really, really nice component to Old Town with local businesses, small businesses that are thriving, then you've got to look at parking. Don't make the mistake again and not have parking. You have to have it. It's just that important to the junction. And here's an opportunity where the commercial properties, the commercial, the demand for commercial properties is really high right now, and we only have a little window of opportunity for another year or so. And then once Bus Boy and Poets and some of the other things that come into Tacoma Park, it's going to, it's just really going to make, make it even more difficult to try to get businesses over there. So that's all. I guess my time is up. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments, and good to see you here again.
Mr. Williams.
Yes.
John, do we have your contact information? Does the city, the city staff have your contact information? Yes. Okay.
Hi. My next, okay, I'll keep it short. I'm Sabrina Eaton. I live on Eastern Avenue, across from the Tacoma Metro Station and the proposed development there. As I've told you guys a bunch of times, I think it's too big, and I just wanted to say, I appreciate the council's efforts to weigh in on this. I would just urge you guys to kind of keep up with that, keep going with the compact hearing, and try to ensure that we, in Maryland, have some sort of a say in this, because it's going to really affect the houses in Maryland that are directly across the street. It's going to affect all the people who commute, you know, the Maryland residents who commute there, and it's really important that Tacoma Park, and, you know, even though we're in Maryland, we have a voice in this. So I just wanted to thank you guys and just urge you to kind of keep going. I kind of miss what some of my, my associates said. There's, there's a lot of people who are working together on this, on both sides of the border, to kind of try to keep this thing manageable. I don't think that many people think that nothing should go in there. I think that, you know, a residence there is fine, but what they're proposing is simply too big, and I would just urge you guys to kind of, kind of keep up with what you're doing and go for, you know, give us a voice there. Thank you.
Evening, I'm Joe Brown, community activist. I'm here with Pat Lovelace, and we have handed you a copy of a draft resolution that we're pushing across the United States of America to restrict the use of drones. Resolution of the City of Tacoma Park for the protection of the public against a potential threat to privacy and safety posted by the use of unmanned aerial vehicle drones. Whereas, United States airspace is the busiest in the world with up to 87,000 flights per day, including commercial airliners and freight haulers, air taxis, and private military aircraft. Whereas, under the Federal Aviation Administration Modernization and Reform Act of 2012, the FAA is directed to create regulations that will enable unmanned aerial vehicles, referred to in the remainder of this ordinance as drones, to fly throughout US airspace by September 15. Whereas, the current absence of legal constraints for the use of drone technology creates a potential for government abuse through the unchecked use of drones. Whereas drones do not have the same capability to avoid other aircraft, and there have been many instances of drone crashes. Whereas drones have the capability of carrying a variety of weapons, including 12-gauge shotguns, tear gas, rubber bullets, bombs and missiles, and have been used overseas to carry out extrajudicial assassinations. Whereas drones have the capacity to continuously monitor and track movements, store images and data, record phone and text communications, and take photos and film individuals without regard to distinction between public and private access on a 24-hour basis. Be it resolved that any data collected or evidence obtained by drone by law enforcement can only be done with a probable cause warrant or an emergency that constitutes an immediate threat. Be it further resolved that data obtained using a warrant may only be used during the time of a court case, and must be immediately destroyed afterwards and not used for any other purpose. Finally, be it further resolved that weaponizing of drones by non-military agencies, especially by law enforcement agencies, be strictly prohibited. I'll turn the floor over to Pat Lovelace. Pat?
Thank you.
What's his name on?
It's on.
It's on.
It is?
Yes.
Okay, this is Pat Lovelace, 7620 Maple Avenue, Tacoma, Black Mill. Your official peace delegate. And one thing that's going to be a threat to peace are those drones. We cannot let that happen. We cannot let our city be, be spied on. We cannot let them be, we cannot, we cannot let them. What happened? Okay, we're doing it now. We cannot let them be harassed by drones. We have to stop the drones from being used in Tacoma Park, and not just by law enforcement, but there are other people out there that will want to do damage too, outright criminals that might get their hands on the drone technology. We cannot let them do it. We have to speak up and speak out against this, and I'd like to see the city of Tacoma Park save us from having to step out of our doors or near our windows in fear of what may be spying on us later on. You know, our private affairs will be, will be made public, and we don't, we don't need that. It's an invasion of our right to privacy. We've got to put an end to it. Another thing too is I'd like to ask Terry Siemens to call in tonight. We have a call-in system for the staff of Tacoma Park and the city council. He's on. Yeah, oh, Terry Siemens. Terry Siemens is speaking up, and I'd like to see him come to the meeting again. And yes, I do miss him. He's a great councilman. He's been really good. Also, I'd like to ask people to come down on June 28th, 29th, 30th, and July 1st and 2nd for the starvation for justice. We have this demonstration every year at the Supreme Court protesting the death penalty throughout the country. We did it in Maryland. Now, we have to guide the other states into doing the same thing. We have to get rid of the death penalty, another form of violence. And again, these drones may be picking up false information on people and get them executed for nothing. We cannot let this happen. Just cannot let this happen. You know they're going to be used against minorities.
Finally, Pat and the council, I want to remind the people of Tacoma Park and the mayor and the council that you are a leader in this type of thing. You have stopped all the nuclear weapons from crossing your territory. I think you were one of the first jurisdictions in the United States to try that.
They are the first.
And, what?
They are the first.
You are the first. And you're not going to be the first to stop with the drone resolution, but you will be added to a long list of cities and towns that are doing it right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Louis Wolf. I'm a resident in DC of Tenleytown, 4107 Ellicott Street. I'm deeply concerned about drones, the, the deployment of drones by this administration. Not only the fact that thousands, really untold thousands, there is, there's a website called DroneWatch.org. You can look up how many thousands of people of what are called collateral damage are being killed in other countries by United States drones. Even, even the President of the United States has talked about how, he says, how we use drones. He says they're very directed, very precise, very clinical. The fact is that they also talk about collateral damage. That's a term that's become popular in the military world. It's, it's as if, they say that war can be humanitarian, humanitarian warfare. I would suggest to you that the very fact that the United States now has drones deployed throughout this country, mostly, I would say truthfully, not for war uses. There is two, there are two recorded cases where they have been used in a military way, in one case nearly, near the border, the Texas border, and another place, I think, in South Carolina, where they were used in an alleged drug case. But the fact is, they are also used for collection of intelligence on an intelligence platform, as, as Joe Brown has pointed out. And lastly, I would remind you that the owner of, that Federal Express is now talking about, this was on 60 Minutes, talking about using drones to deliver packages. How about that? I think, I think Tacoma Park can really set a precedent, as have other places have, but in, in this part of the country, where drones are not known to be part of our life, and they shouldn't be, for any reason. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brian Robinson, Maple Avenue. Two comments, one on the metro development and one on the drones. About the metro development, I work with a group called Friends of Tacoma. There, I keep hearing about development that's too large or too small for the site, and it all seems very simplistic to me. There doesn't seem to be a lot of focus on sustainability, which doesn't mean big buildings or small buildings. I have no problem with big buildings in downtown Tacoma Park. There were, they were building six-story buildings in Tacoma Park in the 1890s for when they built the sanitarium. My concern is the, the siding of the development, the fact that they're building it at the bottom of the valley, which is actually the location of the big, well, the Little Spring. There was the Big Spring and the Little Spring. As, as you know, Tacoma Park was built around two springs. They keep talking about how they can't find one of them. Well, we know where one of them is because it runs right under City Hall. And I told the city about this when we were doing the, the design committee hearings for this building, and everyone, everyone said to me, I remember conversing with Terry on the subject, and he said, Brian, if you could, if you could convince them, show people where this underground stream is, because I don't think anyone believes that there's an underground stream under City Hall. And then when they went to dig it up that, dig up the parking lot, they encountered the giant culvert where Brayshire's Run comes down from the metro site. It runs from basically Spring Street, which was named after the spring. It comes from that triangular plot of land on Spring Street, Spring Place, behind the metro, which they now want to develop, by the way, which used to be a public park because there was a spring on it. It was taken out of parkland when the metro developed that, you know, widened the tracks. And so now we have an underground stream that's still there, and we're talking about building the building on top of the stream instead of, instead of trying to reclaim the streetscape that was there before metro came in. If you look at the developments that were there before, you can see how the area was developed before metro came along, and where the, where the commercial buildings were, there were commercial buildings on the site. There's no commercial, there's no mixed use in this development. And I am concerned about the location, the green space, and I, so we need to focus on sustainable and good design. I'm not, I don't object to the height of the building. I object to the, the way it's developed. Also, on the drone issue, I just wanted to say that's a very important issue, and add my support for that. I should mention that apparently Madea Benjamin wanted to be here and, tonight, and show her support for the issue, but she couldn't make it because of the weather. Also, I'd like to point out that the Obama administration actually changed the law on drones, which is why this is an issue. It's not, it's not because of hype over Iraq War or Afghanistan. They actually changed the law to both, to both legalize police use of drones and legalize hobbyist use of drones. It used to be legal for non-commercial use of drones, but illegal for law enforcement. They reversed that. So they literally made what was illegal for law enforcement legal. Now, there had to have been a reason why it was illegal before, and so...
Thank you, Mr. Robinson.
That's what I had... That's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thanks.
Love it, love it, love it.
Anybody else?
I'm Lareen Pierceall. I'm testifying on behalf of historic Tacoma. I'm here because you are going to be discussing WAMADA this evening. I'm here to reiterate all of our concerns that haven't changed with respect to the scale, the massing, the green space, all of that. We submitted comments at the WAMADA hearing, and Bruce, I gave you a copy. I don't know whether you distributed them to the council, but if you haven't, could you please do that? This was the letter that Michelle Rosenfeld wrote and...
For the, for the hearing in the phone?
Yeah, for the WAMADA hearing, because in it, there are some, I think, important points that I'd like you to be aware of. And one is that we feel that there needs to be a federal process because by virtue of the FTA approval that's required as a federal action and a federal review process for our historic districts, because they are, there are two historic districts, National Registered Historic Districts, that are impacted. This would involve consultation with the Maryland side of the line as well as the district side of the line in a federal process, which is different than a local process. And so I'd like to speak more with you about that, Bruce, if we could meet and have a conversation about it. But I think that's really, really a very important point here with both of our historic districts. Also, something that was brought up by our attorney was the gross inconsistencies with what they're proposing with the central district plan, even for going into a PUD process. It is so extreme that she believes that's a problem. And I'd like to talk with you, again, we should, I mean, have a look at her comments and please distribute it, but I think this, this is a serious issue. It requires process, it requires more process than what is going on, going forward here. I'm also, I'm also worried that I'm hearing there are private meetings being considered with EYA and possibly WAMADA on this with some council members. I don't know if that's the case or not, but I want to caution you on that because this project has a very bad history of that happening without public input. Please do not go down that path again and make sure things are above board and, well, maybe not above board is the right word, but certainly transparent. I think that that's very, very important. And I noted in the, I just want to say that please, you should be making sure you have the most current copies and elevations of everything. As I was looking at the most recent elevation that was attached to this, it was dated May 14th, and it is such bad resolution, I can't tell if anything has changed, but I want to alert you to that because if they're generating changes or whatever to that concept plan, by God, you should have good copies of that. And so if you could inquire on that, I, it's unintelligible, I just can't read it, but I did, I was able to see that it was dated May 14th. Maybe they just changed it for the, maybe it's the same, but it makes me wonder. Thank you.
And the, the letter that you were referring to, copies have been distributed to the council.
Say again?
The, the letter that you were referring to, copies have been distributed to the council.
You did?
Yes.
Thank you.
Arthur David Olson, Hancock Avenue. To the relief of us all, wearing my Citizen with Ideas hat, now that this year's budget has adopted some long-term budget considerations. First, Councilmember Mail asked about when the equipment replacement reserve would begin to grow at the rate of inflation. I created a spreadsheet using equipment reserve data made available last year and my understanding of the city's new policy, all provided on request. One piece of good news, the level of the equipment reserve is near to the roughly $3.6 million, consistent with the new policy. However, the city's capital expenditures are lumpy. For example, planned fiscal year 2019 capital expenses are about twice those of typical years, due in large parts to replacement of expensive trash trucks. After a year such as that, the amount in the equipment replacement reserve will actually drop, which is bad news. To keep up with the inflation in the long run, the reserve level must rise faster than inflation in other years. A greater interest in budgeting, though, is the growth in the yearly addition to the reserve, which is $840,000 this year. Here, it looks as if the addition will grow at the inflation rate over the long run, although the growth will vary from about 1.5% to about 5% in individual years, again due to the lumpiness of capital expenditures. Second, this year's budget included information on how much money the city has in various funds, the general fund, the special revenue fund, and so on. Next year, for each of these, I'd like to also see information on how much the city needs in these funds. I'd expect to see that what the city has in funds reserved for cable capital expenses is far greater than what it needs, while for the equipment replacement reserve, what the city has is about what it needs. I'd also like to see the dollar amounts for what the city has and what the city needs, according to actuaries, in its police employee retirement fund. Here, what the city has is far, far less than what it needs. I believe these numbers would be useful to both citizens and the council in assessing the city's true financial situation. Finally, while the city council has a number of citizen committees to help with its work, conspicuous by its absence is a finance committee. The council may want to create such a committee to assist with what is arguably its biggest, most difficult job. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we will move along to council comments. Councilmember Siemens, I know you're on the phone. Do you have any comments at this point?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And I just wanted to take a minute to let the, to let the community know that I had an operation on May 18th, a quintuple bypass operation. And I just want to thank everybody, my family, friends, and neighbors for their support, encouragement, prayers, and also for many vegan dinners that I've received. I am home and recovering well, and I hope you'll be back in action soon. I did want to mention that I am not going to be able to attend the MML conference in another week or so. My nurse has said that it's going to be impossible to do. But I'll, and lastly, I just wanted to congratulate and thank the Celebrate Tacoma team and the Recreation Department for what I've understood to be an excellent program this year. I'm sorry that I missed it. I obviously would have liked to have been there rather than where I was. Thanks.
It's good to have you participating in the meeting. Councilmember Mail.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to speak and alert the public as well as other council members and city staff about WSSC projects that are completing in Ward 2. It's a large water main replacement project that's been going on for some time, and the project has just suffered from a history of really management failings, from, you know, just really sloppy work, leaving large holes in sidewalks, leaving asphalt, loose asphalt all over sidewalks, grassy margins and the road itself, to very, very low-quality road patching, to today when the WSSC contractor had posted no parking signs on one street, but decided to pave a different street where cars were parked. And so towed all the cars off of that street, thankfully not to a lot, to other adjacent streets where, you know, residents were left to come home and wander around the neighborhood trying to find their cars. And I'm assuming that given that there's a project in Ward 3 and another project in Ward 6, and you have the potential, well, obviously you'll get, WSSC has your, has your supervisor, but quite likely will have some of the same contractors on site, that trying to detail the history of this project and then figure out how to get ahead of it is probably a really important activity. So I just wanted to alert my colleagues to that and, and have found that there has been significant responsiveness when I elevated all the way to the level of a commissioner or the general manager of WSSC, but, and I should say Darryl Braithwaite has been very helpful in reaching out to her contacts as well, but it just shouldn't take going all the way to the top every time for piles of asphalt. It's just a really poorly managed project. Thank you.
Have you been in touch with Ray Skinnell?
No.
Now, he's a resident who's involved with the WSSC Citizens Advisory Board. I'll make the connection. Thanks.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. Deputy City Manager La Loire would like to get an update on whether or not anyone did any research on the CSA with Mike Tabor and also bus shelters on Flower Avenue.
Two things. Emily Cohen is working on CSA. She may have contacted them today, but she's had quite a lot of history with CSAs and so has been working on that with other staff. The bus shelter information will need to wait a couple days because I think I have a meeting on Thursday after all to get all of the information on that. I'll pass that along at that time.
Okay, thank you. And Mayor, I would like to put on a future agenda item, having the council reconsider eminent domain. I think that previous councils said that this was not something that the city should use, but I think we've come to a point where we need to relook at it as a potential policy. Thank you.
Well, first of all, I want to say welcome to Terry. I'm so glad that you're alive and well. Hearing your voice come down from on high made me grateful that I wasn't hearing, listening to you speak from heaven, but it sort of felt a little weird. So the sooner you get back here, the happier I'll be, or will I'll be.
Love it, love it, love it.
All kidding aside, what you went through was miraculous. So I'm, I'm really glad, and so are we all. May 22nd, I was able to hold a community meeting for the residents and businesses in the area in the far corner of the city of Tacoma Park, on the west side, east side of New Hampshire Avenue, on streets named Kentland, Hopewell, and part of Larch Avenue, East-West Highway, street names that most people in Tacoma Park probably never heard of and will never use. But there's a group of residents over there. We had a very successful meeting that met at the Methodist Church on New Hampshire Avenue. The police chief attended and was, his presence was very gratifying to the residents. Darryl Braithwaite also attended, and Eric and Osberg spent some time talking about the Ethan Allen Gateway Project. A number of issues were surfaced that need to be addressed, as I knew there would be, but the point was, was to get people together as a community for once and give them a chance to talk to the people who help run this city and get questions answered and raise, raise their concerns. And so it was the beginning of a process that I'm, was excited to be part of and will be continuing to work on issues that that, that group of residents and some business owners have raised. And I just wanted to, to, to mention that that was an important step in trying to help take care of constituents. And that was my only comment. Thank you.
Councilmember Mail has another comment.
Yeah, just briefly following up on Councilmember Smith's comment, I had earlier expressed interest in talking about the option for the city to establish a bloated property tax rate. And so just wanted to remind the mayor of, of my interest at least, and I don't know about colleagues, in, in trying to figure out if there's something we can do to, to better address bloated properties, abandoned, derelict, falling apart homes that are in our historic district or other parts of the city. Thank you.
And just a reminder that we, we retain the ability to set different tax rates for different classes of property. There was an attempt during the legislature, the last session, to remove the ability of municipalities to do that, but we still have that ability. I don't see anything else. I don't have anything, so we'll go to the city manager's report.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Just a few comments. The first one is just a reminder that we have a public hearing next week, June 2nd, on dog parks. We have...
Your red button.
Sorry. Working, working? Working? Yes.
Working.
Sorry about that.
Try again.
We have a meeting, a public hearing next week, next Monday, on the location for the dog parks, following up on the meeting that we had last week. We have put some information up on our website, and we'll continue to put some information up on our website. We're also doing just a little bit of flyering around, in particular, two of the sites that I think, from the staff's side, that we had discussed previously and some of the feedback we'd heard from council at the previous meetings, in particular, the Prince George's Avenue site and the Hefner Park site, which is right off of the Darwin Avenue parking lot. And so we just wanted to, again, just mention that we'll, we'll be talking a little bit more about some cost and some locational analysis information next week, but just wanted to put that placeholder out there a little bit. Next, we've got, happy to report, we have been working a little bit on the summer youth employment program. We have had a, in this, in this auditorium, we had a information session with a couple of youth, sort of a mini boot camp. We had interview training, some professional skill development. Our application period has just ended, and I believe we have about 11 or 12 applicants, which, again, for a very small pilot program, we think is a great turnout. And so we're looking forward to the next steps, which are going to be some interview rounds and then some, some whittling down of some, some folks. So I'd just like to say thank you to the council members who also contributed in terms of getting the word out about the summer youth program. We're, we're very excited about kicking that off here very soon. We have a new bike map. I think the Housing and Community Development Office has just put together a new bike map, which I believe is in your mailboxes, if I am not mistaken. And I think we'll, if it's not on the website, it should be on the website soon. It's got some depictions of bike lanes, both current and future, if I'm right, or is it just current?
Mostly current.
Mostly current. Bike lanes and bike, bike share stations and so forth, and so just encourage everyone to take a look at that. And then just one more note from the Housing and Community Development folks. We've got an extended medical leave absence that's happened in our housing code enforcement, temporary, but just some of the wait times may be just a little bit longer while we continue to chug all some of the cases that we have until our, the temporary medical leave situation relieves itself, but just wanted to mention that to everybody. Thank you very much.
Can I ask a question with regard to the bike map? Is, is there any indication or sense or notion about when bike share might be able to be expanded into the far nether regions of the city of Tacoma Park like Ward 6? I mean, if there is, great. If there's not, that's...
I don't just feel right now. We've certainly been pushing for it.
Yeah, we just don't know yet.
I don't know.
Okay.
Yeah, actually, I just saw today, I don't think it's Tacoma Park, but Montgomery County announced funding for something like six additional bike share stations. There might have been two beyond that as well, but for 2016 of all times. I, I am, just, just noting this, it would be great, I've mentioned this to the Safe Roadways Committee, if, if we, meaning the city, Safe Roadways, anyone else who cares can find ways to promote the bike share use, especially given the statistics that I've seen for the stations in Tacoma Park, for the station that is down Maple Avenue at Ritchie, that would be great, ways to promote use. That could include perhaps subsidizing initial memberships for people in these neighborhoods. That'd be real cool. And then in addition, I've discussed with some people, including city staff and Safe Roadways, if we could get... Roadways, if we could get the so-called Chiros, the on-pavement markings for bicycles on Carroll Avenue as you go into Old Tacoma, where the current bike lane or pseudo-bike lane at the curb ends at Park and Columbia by the Cheesecake Place, if we could get them extended and of course, get on-street Chiros bike markings in other places as well, that would be real cool.
Any other questions for the city manager? Okay, we'll move to our regular meeting agenda, and we have two items. The first is a first reading ordinance amending Tacoma Park Code, Chapter 8, the commercial management districts and authorities authorizing continuation of the Tacoma line across from the CDA. Ms. Danes.
I wanted to point out for you some of the additions that were made since our initial conversation the other day regarding potential edits to the proposed ordinance amendment. Unfortunately, I did not put page numbers on this, so if you'll bear with me a moment. If you turn to page five and look at Section 8.36.080, the Board of Directors, this is one change that we have made since the proposed amendment was presented to the City Council. And this was done at the suggestion of Councilmember Schultz and was supported by the CDA President and the Executive Director. If this ordinance is adopted by the council, it would increase the membership of the Board of Directors of the CDA by 11, up to 11 members. Right now, it's currently 10. The reason for that is that that would provide an additional board member representing the expanded service area that has been proposed by the CDA. So, we would suggest bumping up the overall membership of the Board of Directors to 11 people from 10, and then expanding the number of area directors, which represent a specific geographical area within the CDA service area from four to five, with one of the new area director position being dedicated for the new group of property owners and businesses that would be added to the CDA. Does that make sense? If you turn to page eight, and this would be Section 8.36.110G, we have added language allowing the city manager at his or her discretion and upon written request to the Board of Directors to assume responsibility for the billing and collection of license fees on behalf of the authority, and recognizing that the CDA would then be responsible for any costs associated with that billing and the collection. And that was at the request of the council following our work session discussion the other day. And then, the last changes that have been made to this that were not included in the original ordinance amendment are on the last page. I've included a section requiring annual reporting by the CDA to the City Council in July of each year. July was selected because the CDA, like the city, is on a fiscal year, so this would be at the beginning of their fiscal year, giving them also the opportunity to present additional information or presentations to the council as appropriate. And then, have added a section that establishes a specific sunset period for the CDA. And again, this is tied to the CDA's fiscal year, and it would end on June 30th, 2021, at which point in time the council would come back and revisit it, the ordinance again, to see whether or not the CDA wishes to continue its existence or if it needs to be amended, et cetera. Everything else is basically the same. There have been some minor tweaks, but nothing substantive.
Okay.
This would be the first reading. If it's approved tonight, it's tentatively scheduled for a second reading on the 23rd of June and would go into effect on July 1st, which again, corresponds to the fiscal year for the CDA and would facilitate their billing for their license fees.
Thanks. Councilmember Schultz.
The changes that you've proposed are in accordance with what I had, I think, what we expected, and that's great. I do want to make a couple corrections, which I think are just simple oversights, on the front of the ordinance, under the last, the fourth and the last whereas, at the very end of that sentence...
Yes.
And desires to repeal the Tacoma Park Code provision for expiration of the CDA. That should be struck.
Yes, we caught that earlier this evening, so that'll be adjusted for the final reading.
Okay. And then, on the, let's see, if that was page one, this would be two, three, four, where is it now? Excuse me, one, two, three, four, six. Where you have numbers one, two, three, four, and five describing various sections. The word Kennewick in Item 3 and Item 4 should be changed to Kirkland Avenue. Because Kennewick runs east and west, and so, excuse me, Kirkland runs east and west, Kennewick, and so, there is a south of Kirkland and a north of Kirkland, but Kennewick doesn't run east and west, and so...
We'll go back and look at that again.
Doesn't make any sense.
Yeah.
And then, lastly, going back two pages to district boundaries, this is just a suggestion. The Section A, which describes the new area, as well as adjoining some of the older area, it just seems to me if you took out all the easts and norths and wests and souths and just said sequentially bounded by the following streets, you'd end up with something that's a little easier to comprehend, because a lot of the streets don't run north and southeast or west. They're on all kinds of angles, and people don't know which is north and south unless you sit there with a compass. That's just...
No, that's a great suggestion.
Doesn't change the meaning.
We've been running back and forth with descriptions.
You could also divide that up into five sections and name each one, here and after referred to as Area 1, here and after referred to as Area 2, and then that'll allow you to eliminate all the language two pages later. That's a helpful suggestion that you're welcome to ignore. That's all I have.
Councilmember Grimes.
Thank you. I want to run by you a one-word change to one of the changes that you mentioned, which is the Paragraph G of Section 8.36.110, license fees. The second sentence of Paragraph G is, "The authority shall be charged for all expenses incurred by the city in billing and collecting license fees." Of course, that's contingent on the exception. Often, the fees will be charged to the party that is late. So, the one-word change I'd suggest is, "The authority shall be responsible for all expenses incurred," if you think that would work, but the point is to allow the authority to pass the expenses for collection on to the party that is late in paying the fees. If you think that would be acceptable and would do the trick to allow them to pass on the fees, I'd propose that change.
I can run that by the city attorney's office. She's been involved in that.
So, responsible instead of charged.
Councilmember Maill.
Thank you. So, under 8.36.080, the Board of Directors officers, I think that's the right section. We, I thought last week I had suggested, and I had, the mayor had queried the council and gotten affirmative head nods, with regard to eliminating this specificity about each location, each quadrant or each zone in which there would be a board member, and simply saying, in, sorry, one second here, simply saying essentially referring to the bylaws. Sorry, I'm just trying to trouble switching pages on this document. Where is it? There should be not more than a total of five area directors representing areas as provided for in the bylaws or areas identified in the bylaws. And then, just not laying it out. I mean, I just, from my perspective, in simplifying our code, I just don't see a reason for council to get that far into the weeds, assuming that the association would want all of its members to be represented on the board. And then, it also addresses Councilmember Schultz's query about the Kirkland versus whatever the other street is. Okay.
I had missed that suggestion, and based on the comments from Councilmember Schultz, it makes a lot of sense, so we can do that.
Can I suggest that since we've had a number of potential changes to what we have in front of us, that we, for clarity's sake, this evening, move adoption of this as presented, as written, here? And we'll have all of those pieces added in on second reading, because if we're trying to say, okay, now let's go through and make sure we've got them all tonight, it'll be a bit laborious, and then we might come up with something else and something else.
I spoke with the city attorney about that possibility this evening, and she said that that will work. What will happen is that in the text, that'll show up as a different, it'll have different...
A different underline and strikeout method.
Yeah.
So, they'll all be called out in second reading.
So, before you have a conversation about that, the changes that have been proposed this evening are for the district boundaries, eliminating east, west, north, south, eliminating the specific reference regarding the area directors, geographical areas, and adding, using the word responsible for as opposed to charged regarding expenses associated with the city's collection of license fees and late fees.
And the striking of that last, of the language in the last whereas, that you had already caught.
Yes.
Okay, and I think my suggestion is the way to go, because there's the potential for some of those to ripple into other areas, and we don't want to be wordsmithing that ripple tonight. Councilmember Siemens, I'm hearing noises from your microphone. Do you have any comments?
It's probably my head coming off the desk now.
Okay. Did you have something? Does somebody want to move the ordinance?
I will move the ordinance. Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Schultz, seconded by Councilmember Smith. Is there any further council discussion? Okay, it's a first reading ordinance. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, that is unanimous this evening at first reading, and we'll CD all the amendments at second reading.
Thank you.
Next item is the consent agenda. Two items on the consent agenda, both single reading ordinances, one awarding a contract for an IT assessment, the other awarding a contract for furniture for the community's center green roof. Would somebody like to move the consent agenda?
I'll move it.
Moved by Councilmember Siemens. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Maill. It's single reading ordinances, so we'll need a roll call. Please call a roll.
Councilmember Grimes?
Yes.
Councilmember Maill?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart? Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Schultz?
Aye.
One more.
Oh. Mayor Williams?
Aye. I could have left it as an abstention. That passes unanimously. We will now move to work session, and we have two items. The first one is discussion of revisions to the police department over hire policy. The chief is here.
Mayor and council, just to reiterate before the chief starts, we had a council discussion on May 5th regarding police recruitment and hiring policies, including ordinance number 200233, which talks about the over-hiring of police officers in particular. We talked a little bit about, I think, the chief articulated some of the challenges in terms of medical and injury leave, eligibility for retirement, and the timeline for both hires of new police officers, as well as even some of the lateral moves due to background checks and so forth that have to happen. From that discussion, we went back and took a look at a few metrics, particularly around the budget, which are presented in the memo here, to see if there were any potential changes that needed to happen that we would potentially propose to the ordinance. And in your packet, you've got just some of the changes that we are potentially proposing, with the biggest one really being that we've provided a few instances where we think that we've either experienced historically in terms of challenges, which may refer more to the people who are eligible to retire, but just wanted to provide a little bit more flexibility, I think, in terms of situations that can arise and opportunities we would have to potentially hire additional officers to make sure that we have the maximum number of officers on the street as possible. So, with that, I don't know if the chief has anything else to add.
No, just, as I've said before, the previous ordinance really was unusable in its form because we, as you can see on the worksheet, that we're very rarely that far under budget. We don't get that much salary savings, so that we would not necessarily come in at the budgeted level for over-hires under the old ordinance. So, what we're proposing is that when we get to a level, if we have individuals, and I'll just use some examples, we had in the past several people that were on light duty that we knew would not be coming back, but had probably a year left to go to retire. We've had people that were on medical that we knew were not coming back, but they have to go through that process through retirement, through workers' comp, things like that, that we know they are not coming back on the street, but yet, we can't start the hiring process before that. This would allow us to do that in effect and make those coverages. Also, if somebody gives us notice that they're going to retire in six months, we could start the hiring process ahead of time. Generally, I think we'll probably be, you know, this is going to be a very judicious use, but I think we'll be coming in at budget, but it could go over budget just a little bit at the end of the year. It really depends on how our staffing goes. You know, if they're workers' comp injuries, then two-thirds of the salary is paid by workers' comp, not by the city, so there's some savings there. You know, it's sort of a crapshoot.
And you think that there isn't going to be too much of a budgetary impact? I'm trying to figure out the difference between, under the current policy, it sounds like maybe the issue was not the money, but it was kind of holding off on starting the process and therefore, a timing issue.
Well, yes and no. I mean, it really was money, because the fact is, if we hired somebody and then we go over budget, then it was a violation of the ordinance. The ordinance did not allow us to come back to you and explain, we had to hire this person early, because the ordinance was very specific that says, hey, you can hire as many people. I could hire 20 people under the old ordinance, as long as I came in under budget or at budget, so, which obviously is not going to happen. This allows us to start the process. If we know somebody's going to be leaving within the next couple of months, six months, we can go ahead and start the process. We may go slightly over budget, you know, if we have to hire them early, but it's also one way to get somebody, get them through an academy, because we're also at the mercy of the state and the other jurisdictions for, not just the competition for employment, but we have 10 laterals in the pipeline right now that we're looking at, but there, you know, half of them are from out of state, which means that they have to go to a comparative compliance class. Well, guess what? The state and all the other municipal academies that run comparative compliance aren't doing another class this year. They've already done their class for the year. So, we can't really, you know, hire them right away. So, the other thing is, we have three slots right now that are allotted to us in the next Montgomery County class, but that doesn't start till October 1st. So, we have to start the hiring process now to make sure that we can get those three people filled, if we have a situation where we need to get them on board. So, we are sometimes at the mercy of other agencies, the academies, in order to get these people trained, we need to hire them earlier than later.
So, the difference is, it gives you a level of confidence that you can start somebody and have a little bit of flexibility on the timing for the vagaries that you've just described, and knowing that you can go ahead and get involved in this process, and if it does take you a little bit over, you'll have the ability to come back with a budget amendment.
Correct. And then, again, at the end of that fiscal year, we can look at, you know, we do the budget amendment, obviously, if we have to, but that position would be, you know, eliminated if we go to 43, just for... be, you know, eliminated if we go to 43, just for on paper, 43, because we wouldn't have the person here. Uh, the reality is that through attrition, it'll go back down to that level at the next, next opportunity.
So there's, there needs to be something, do, do we have something in place now, or would there need to be something that would adjust the FTEs, or that would be part of the budget amendment?
No, that would, I think that would be part of the budget amendment. I, I don't think we want to be tied into that. You know, let's say we have two people that we know aren't coming back. I mean, I don't want to get tied into FTEs. We just, we're, we're at our current FTE level. I think that, uh, the ordinance allows us to get the process started to hire those people, even though if it goes over those, that 42 FTEs, and then we come back at the end of the year and it'll be reconciled.
Yeah. I think the intent is to, um, you know, the, the council's been pretty clear that, and, and even from the staff side, that 42 sworn officers is what we're trying to, that's the number we're trying to get to. And so there may be some situations where we have two officers, as an example, that are out for an extended period of time because of medical leave or whatever. In that case, I think there may be a suggestion, you know, to the council that we may want to hire, begin the hiring process for two people. It may be one person, um, dependent upon a, um, a retirement or so forth, but I think the number we're effectively trying to solve for is 42, trying to keep 42 on the street as, as close as possible.
Basically, we're trying to get ahead of the curve versus always, always playing catch-up. And, you know, again, we have to get people through an academy or through a training program and the hiring process, and we don't pick the academy dates. Uh, that's basically what it comes down to. So we could, could actually be 18 months behind in a hiring process, depending on our timing. So this allows us to get ahead of that and anticipate the opening, anticipate the, the training opportunity, uh, and get those people on board and trained.
If I may, part of the, part of the point here is, you know, in the proposed ordinance, talks about communication between the city manager and the council as these various, you know, situations arise. Um, and so I think that it, um, it allows things to begin without having to go through an ordinance, with a budget amendment, with changing FTEs and what that might mean for future years. You know, it just allows some flexibility, um, within a couple of months period, and it always gives the council the final say via budget amendment if it were to affect the budget.
Uh, Councilmember Siemens, I know you wanted to, uh, speak on this issue.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Uh, you know, this is a problem that the city has faced for as long as I've been on the council, and, uh, you know, as, 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 uh, as, uh, to fix this problem, I won't come to the, uh, the, uh, but I certainly, uh, while I'm working and, uh, being a manager or, 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 you know, the purpose is to give the city manager and his staff the resources they need to, uh, maintain the level of, uh, staffing that the council approves. Uh, it has not worked the way we've had it passed. This ordinance, uh, looks to me like it moves us in the right direction. Really, uh, the only thing I would say is that I want to be used respectfully, but also, uh, on the critical side, I, I can't say that, uh, it has the safeguarders that are coming back, uh, shouldn't say I'm not in that. And the main purpose is, you keep officers on the street, we'll be guaranteed to keep community safe.
Councilmember Siemens?
Yes.
Try adjusting how you're talking into the phone or something, because it's very difficult to follow what you're saying.
If he's got the TV on, he might need to turn the volume down.
Okay.
There you go.
There it is. I was probably blocking the wrong end of the phone. Who knows? Let me go back and, and say that, uh, you know, this has been a longstanding problem. Uh, we thought the previous council had thought that we had solved the problem. I accept the fact that it's flawed and I want to, myself, to be.
You're on the wrong end of the phone again.
Well, well, it's a stormy day. Let me just end it by saying I fully support this and I thank the chief.
Hey, there you go. Would, would, would any of my colleagues like to go on that same phone? Uh, Councilmember Schultz?
Oh. Two, two comments. Uh, one is that seems to me makes a lot of sense to be able to exceed our budget in an orderly way to, uh, and temporarily, uh, for, for this, for this purpose. Uh, it's just so important to be able to keep our sworn staff on the street where they belong. Uh, the other thing, I'm curious, how does it, the situation when you have officers on administrative leave, who, for example, like where they've had to use their weapon, we had that, had a couple incidents in my time on the city council, where officers were not allowed to be on the street because they were involved in grand jury follow-up investigations that took an eternity. Would this, this wouldn't be, have any effect on that, would it?
It, it, it could potentially. We could use it, uh, to fill the position as long as we knew at the end of that year somebody else was leaving.
Mm-hmm.
But they weren't leaving for that year, that year. I mean, we may have to go over, because in fact, we did. We had three officers involved out of the six officers that fired at the, the bank shooting the Capitol One.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I was there, but I was wearing a different color patch. Um, and three officers were involved in that, and three officers were on administrative leave. Uh, we've had, we had two officers involved in another incident in Prince George's County. Unfortunately, the grand jury process in Prince George's County took a lot longer than it did in Montgomery County, uh, and those officers were off of work for well over a year. Uh, one retired and the one stayed on light duty for another year and then retired. So, uh, you know, we had lost one officer for two years. So, yeah, I mean, it could potentially be used to, to fill something where we know long-term, the person's not coming back or they're not able to come back.
Right. Okay. But obviously, there's going to be some times when you're just, even the officer, him or herself, isn't going to be able to know what.
Yeah. And that, and that's where, you know, the discussion's going to have to take place between the, the city manager, myself, and then eventually to the council, saying, okay, this is where we're at. But at this point, you know, it, it's going to be on a case-by-case basis.
Yes. Thank you.
Councilmember Mail?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so I've, as I've said before, I, you know, I fully support trying to make this into a functional part of our city policy. Um, I have a couple of specific concerns, though, and they really relate to, um, I guess my just, my fears about creep. So we, we get another one on and then how does that manifest itself when we get to the next budget process? My specific suggestions here, we have this last whereas clause that describes conditions under which, or criteria under which the city manager is, is, uh, is potentially going to use as a trigger for a decision. Um, I would move most of those, the, the opening, the city manager is able to identify occasions or thresholds that should trigger beginning the hiring process, leave that as a whereas, but turn the remainder of that into a therefore. Therefore, when, uh, you know, dot, 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 the following criteria are met, um, the city manager, you know, can, will, whatever the right word is, uh, can, can initiate the process. Similarly, for the first, um, therefore clause here, uh, what we say in the current therefore is, the city manager is authorized to hire police officers above the number authorized, uh, to ensure the operating strength of the police department is adequate to meet public safety demands. To me, that's just too broad. Adequate, um, is, is a very subjective word. Um, and I would just rather have that be a, a whereas clause. Um, that's almost the opening, right? The whole point of this is, is that it's a, that it's a, we're trying to make sure we can meet public safety, uh, demands. So to me, essentially, what I'm talking about is just sort of reversing those two around, although I find, I find that particular narrative to be one of the opening reasons, so I would put it near the top. And then my third criteria, uh, first a, a request for information and then a suggestion around this, this language. Um, I don't know what the limits are in terms of legal limits or otherwise, for a city to have more officers on than we have authorized FTEs. Um, you know, can you do that? Can you have 43 when you only have 42 authorized in a budget? I would assume that you, you can. There's nothing that, you know, Brian wouldn't go to jail.
No, and I, I think the prior ordinance actually, yeah, who's going to lock them up? Um, no, the, uh, the, the ordinance.
We're random of understanding with the district.
Yeah, well, that, don't hold your breath. Um, actually, that's still moving forward, uh, but a whole nother issue. No, I, I, I think that the other ordinance actually already authorized that, because if you only had 42 FTEs, it'd still let you go to 43 even though you stayed under budget. So it's, it's, this just allows us to go back and say, we're, we're doing the same thing, it's just, we may have to come in and do a budget amendment.
And, and we can, we'll, we can ask Sue Silver just to make sure.
And, and specifically, assuming that we can do that, what I'd want in the, um, in the therefore clauses is something that says how that will work itself out in policy. So, you know, therefore, um, when an additional FTE is hired above the authorized number, um, you know, that shall not change the FTE number in the, in the following budget, or something like that. So it just clarifies this, the policy the city manager's going to pursue in developing the next budget with regard to the rare circumstance where we get to 43 or 44, or whatever the number is, uh, you know, and, and that, that shift has not happened at the time of the, of the budget, um, process. Because our budget process goes on so long, because the idea of some of these over-hires are, you know, potentially could be a long period of time where we have to, we have an extra person in a spot.
Well, and maybe you would call it a, a, you know, the over-hire, you know, but the authorized would still be at 42, however, be reduced by attrition at the earliest convenience or something to that effect.
Yeah. So just, just something that clarifies that would, would be, uh, would be helpful to me. Thank you.
And if, if I can just add to Councilmember Mail's comments, that I think I tend to agree with him on the switching of the whereas and the therefore, but the, the one question that, uh, that brings up for me is, I had already kind of underlined an area of the very end of the, what's currently the last whereas, wondering whether we wanted to have in there, uh, all of these various, various criteria, uh, that would trigger the hiring process, and then at the end say, and other similar criteria. I thought, mm, I'm not sure I want that in there. And, and if we, I certainly don't want it in there if we make that a therefore rather than a whereas. Councilmember Grimes?
Thanks. Thanks. Um, would, would you and Councilmember Mail have said seem fine? My comments are just two quick ones, that while we do have, uh, percentage of personal budget expended in the last few years, that neither the past ordinance from 2002 nor the proposed one are based on expenditures, they're based on number of authorized positions. But this does raise the question, given that we exceeded the personal budget in two of the last six years and came very close in the other four, whether the personal budget has been adequate for the number of authorized positions, that would be both sworn officers and, uh, non-sworn positions. So perhaps the, we've passed the budget for the next fiscal year, but for the one after that, consider whether, uh, the, the actual budget amounts correspond to the personnel that we're authorizing. That's it.
And I'll be honest, I, the reason it went over, I can only, uh, guess at this point, because it's before my time, but, uh, there were shortages, those were when the shootings took place, and that's when you had a lot of people off, so there was probably some overtime expenditures. Just a guess.
Sounds right. Councilmember Smith?
Thank you. Chief, I do support your proposal, and I think it's, um, it's great that you are getting ahead of the curve and trying to fix this problem. What does it usually cost for the pre-employment of an officer? When you're looking to see, we need to fill this position, you're going out, putting out, uh, ads, or, you know, you're talking to other agencies, is there a number, like 25,000, 5,000?
No. I mean, the, the background investigations we do in-house, we don't have to farm it out. The, the physicals are about a thousand dollars, the polygraphs another thousand or so. So, you know, I would say it's in the, in the three or four thousand dollar range, staffing-wise. Uh, you know, we bring people in on overtime to do the testing, we do the testing in-house, we buy the testing from a certified, uh, personnel, uh, company that, so we don't have to do our own tests and certify them.
Right.
Uh, so, I mean, but everything's pretty much done in-house. Now, to equip the officer and to get them, you know, ready by the time the class starts, let's say, we're going to put three in this next class in, in October, uh, now we have to equip them, and that runs into, you know, number, four, five thousand dollars apiece for all the equipment, that they have to have uniforms, things like that. But, and we don't usually, unlike, you know, a major department that has, you know, a quartermaster corps and, and warehouse full of uniforms, we have to order those things and get those things in advance of them starting work, so.
And do you foresee a budget amendment for those type of things?
Uh, no, I think we've worked it into the budget for this year and, and, and for the remainder of this year, for the hiring, that we're going to be able to, to, to stay within budget this year and, a, as far as those items, uh, for the, any new people we hire between now and July, because we do have openings. And then, uh, next year, we've already budgeted in there.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Um, anybody else have any additional comments? Are we ready to summarize this one and make sure we can go forward with it? Sounds like there's agreement that we want to do this. Sounds like there's agreement that we want to flip the, uh, the whereas and the therefore, the last whereas and the first therefore, and remove the, uh, final four words from what's currently the last whereas, deleting and other similar criteria. Were there other changes that we agreed on?
Just, um, to try to add some additional language, just sort of clear, to, to Councilmember Mail's comment, to try to clarify the, if there's any policy, especially as it relates to what happens in the next fiscal year as it relates to FTEs.
Right.
And also just to do a quick legal review of, just to make sure that we can actually do that.
Okay.
I actually have one, one other thing. In the, in that final whereas where there's a number of criteria, these were kind of off the top of our heads as we were.
So if you want to add some?
We may want to, if it ends up in being something that's very, you know, put into the therefore category, so that it's more written in stone.
If it loses its ability to include something else.
As opposed to examples that would come to you, we may want to see if this is accurate in our best judgment, or if, if the police department, uh, or others feel that there should be some other criteria.
I'm assuming that is reasonable. Okay, so there's agreement on that one. Okay. So it sounds like, uh, you'll, we'll come back to this, uh, for a voting item in a relatively short period of time. So we'll put that on the agenda as soon as it's ready, as soon as it's had the legal review that it needs. Okay. Thank you. Uh, we have one remaining item. Uh, do people want to take a short break or just do the last item?
Do the last item.
Do people on the dais want to just take a break or do the last item?
Do the last item.
All right. We will do the last item.
Want to ask Perry?
Oh, he's, he's agreeable to both things now.
He just li, he just lies there and nods his head.
How's your daddy?
Okay. Uh, last item is a discussion of the Womata compact hearing. Um, what I wanted to do was to, uh, give us a chance to kind of catch up with where things are now, if there's been any changes, uh, give the council an opportunity to consider how we want to participate in the compact hearing. My assumption is that we want to, that we want to testify. Uh, we have the past resolution or resolutions that the city has passed that are the guidance for, uh, our feelings on this, wanting to make sure that if there's anything additional that we want to say, that we have the opportunity to do that well enough before the, uh, compact hearing, so that we can, uh, consider that and, uh, depending on the discussion tonight, if there's, uh, some formal action that we need to take, or if we need to continue the discussion, uh, with some additional information. I do want to say that, uh, I had a meeting last Thursday afternoon with Jack Lester and Bob Youngentob of EYA. Uh, the city manager and the deputy city manager were there with me in the meeting, and the purpose, they had requested the meeting, uh, the, the purpose of the meeting was they provided us with an update on the, on the schedule, uh, on, on their sense of, uh, timing as to what was going to happen after the compact hearing, that it would be, uh, a couple of month process to get to the end of that, the process with the federal review, and that, uh, Womata would be, uh, to basically, uh, looking at, uh, what, what it's supposed to do in the compact hearing, uh, to look at the transit access, which is where the city had a whole lot of, uh, interest the last time, and, uh, then that it would proceed to the PUD process. They were wondering, uh, about any suggestions for best ways for the, for them and the city to, uh, have any discussions that would be fruitful. Um, where we left it after that was that, uh, they should probably correspond with staff, and that was pretty much the extent of it. I want to turn it over to, uh, Brian and Susie to talk about any particulars they want to talk about, uh, from that meeting, and, uh, then we can, uh, see where we want to go from here. then we can see where we want to go from here.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I found the meeting to be, you know, very factual. It was helpful for me. I didn't have the background of some of the actions that transpired in the past, and so it was helpful to get caught up a little bit. And, you know, I think that their suggestions around just general milestone dates was helpful, in terms of just being able to see not only timing for the compact hearing, but at least from their perspective, what they think timing would be going forward. So I think it was helpful to hear some articulation of where the city can perhaps be helpful and to provide some context, but also just to generally understand what the process was going to be. So, I found it to be very helpful.
So I'll just reiterate, this was a, basically, check-in on process. There was no attempt to negotiate or anything like that, there were no details forthcoming. So, I just wanted to make sure everybody knew that that's where things stood. We have the opportunity to testify at the compact hearing, and wanted to check in with my colleagues as to if there's anything that we need to, anything that you all need. Some members of the council have been more involved with this issue than others. Some of us were around for the last compact hearing and had that experience. I want to give an opportunity to make sure that everybody is comfortable and up to speed with what the purpose of the compact hearing is and what we might want to comment on. Councilmember Smith, is that an old light or a new light?
It's an old light.
Okay. Councilmember Grimes?
Thank you. Thank you to the community activists who came out this evening with your signs. I look forward to seeing them on the street, on private property, of course. It is my belief that the city, I don't interpret that any council member has changed positions on the development, including in particular the points that the activists raised when they spoke earlier this evening regarding the building size. I can't recall whether Mr. Radzovich this week, or whether it was last week, mentioned the green space buffers with the adjoining buildings and so on. I don't think our positions have changed, but the resolution that we passed back last October in the section two referred specifically to changes to the design prior to the vote on the amended joint development agreement by the Womata Board. So that's been overtaken by events, as the expression goes. I, my own thought is that, I do intend to testify at the compact hearing, and I hope that other council members and the mayor will as well. My own feeling is that it would be more powerful if we did agree to a city position as expressed in a resolution, so that each of us would be speaking on behalf of the city. I doubt that any of us would deviate from that position, but you never know what happens when you get up there. So, that's my view, that it would be a good idea to have another resolution that would reaffirm our position but tie it to the compact hearing, and so we can discuss that. Sorry, I'm just looking at some notes. There is one other point, which is that there are many residents who are affected, Maryland residents who are affected, as well as Washington DC ones, by this development, who aren't on email lists, they aren't getting, they're not noticing the types of communications we normally put out. The mayor and I had a conversation with one of them at the Womata Board meeting, where the joint development agreement was approved. And the question I have is, and I guess it's a suggestion, whether the city should send a notice by mail to the residents of the area to be defined closest to the metro system, to make sure that they know about the compact hearing. Normally, I'd say that would be a responsibility of Womata's, but they're not a organization that typically interacts with the public in this way. So it is something that I could see the city taking on, and to just simply ensure that the affected residents in Maryland are aware of the meeting.
I have a, just a quick question. We do, we're on the, about the deadline for the newsletter, but the newsletter would be out before that time, so if you would rather, or if that would do.
Actually, I checked with Jenny Myers, and she said that she is planning to run an item, and the deadline is the twenty-sixth, which is, what, yesterday?
We can still get something in, so we intended to have that, if that's sufficient for you.
Well, I guess that does go to every household.
Yes.
Partly, the question is where she's going to position it on the front cover, you'd know that, and I wouldn't.
We can look at that.
Yeah, maybe that would be sufficient if you just checked into that, that in your judgment, it gets sufficient billing in the newsletter, visibility, that is. Yeah, okay, so that would answer that question. So really, I'm just suggesting that we consider a resolution that reaffirms our position that's targeted to the compact hearing.
Councilmember Schultz?
Yeah, I will be the first to admit that I feel, coming into this from a fairly naive position, although I've, those people here know that I've spoken out on this issue. And I guess, so some of my questions are going to be fairly basic. I guess I'm still puzzled, if you could, Mayor, answer as to what was the reason that the representatives to EYA actually wanted to have a face-to-face meeting as, with you and our staff, as opposed to just an exchange of emails? It doesn't sound like there was any substantive discussion other than an exchange of facts, as was referred to. So I'm just curious.
I would say that they were, they were looking to understand the best way to communicate and get the best feedback. I would characterize their position as the best feedback with the least amount of noise.
Best feedback, with the least amount of noise from whom?
As in, like, is there a good way for them to get, to either share or get information about whatever it is that they or we would feel was necessary to correspond about?
So that would presume that they're actually interested in listening?
Yes, I got that impression.
I mean, from my perspective, it was just, you know, an opportunity for them to try to reach out. I think they were open to pretty much any form of communication. I think, you know, it's easier probably to talk than to exchange lots of wordy emails necessarily. I think that this was just their call. I know that in the email that I received from Jack, he also referenced, and I'm not party to this, but I guess a conversation that he had with Representative Van Hollen about trying to keep open communications with all kinds of, I assume, representatives within the state of Maryland, so that may have also been part of it.
Was there, again, this is just another open question, any indication of their, of interest on EYA's representative's parts about trying to offer communications or, you know, conversation, let's use that big word here, with, outside of the formal process that's being set up by Womata and the DC government and all of that other, because we all are aware of the formal process. That's what probably terrifies some of the people in this room, is that it's going to go down the tracks and pick up steam and speed, and it'll be, get more and more difficult to change things as time goes by.
Yeah, that, I don't have a good answer about how they were thinking about, you know, how they're thinking about that process. You know, I think that, again, this was, in my opinion at least, just their opportunity to try to reach out and to try to communicate as much as they can. And, you know, right now, we're still in sort of, sort of a, more of an informal process, because we're still pre, we're right before the compact hearing. It gets a lot more formal, as pretty much most of the council knows, it gets a little bit more formal after the compact hearing with PUD process and so forth. And so, and honestly, even within the PUD process, there's a lot of meetings and ANC involvement, so I mean, even that is not necessarily as rigid as, there's no scripted, there's scripted meetings, but there certainly are meetings outside of that process that happen.
And just as a, for instance, of one of my responses to what they were talking about, I said, I wanted to consider, as we went through the compact hearing, the PUD, that if they were willing to come back to the city and make a presentation as things were going to change through that process, or just, you know, kind of a formal way to get information back on those processes, if it would be helpful to have them, before they make a formal presentation at a council meeting, to something less formal, where they can, you know, kind of explain whatever it is that they're proposing, or changes, or something like that, so that there could be something where boards are set up and the public has the opportunity to ask questions, rather than that, just that more formal process.
I mean, I think that's, my opinion is that that's a critical thing that needs to be encouraged, because, I mean, surely EYA understands, you know, they're not ignorant of this resolution that we passed, they're not ignorant of the Tacoma Park communities or the DC communities' points of concerns. And if I'm a developer, I have to be calculating, what are my chances of being able to pull this thing off without having to make any substantial changes in response to the community, or what are my chances if I start to talk about, and in a creative way, informally, with people like those who are sitting in our audience right now, not, you know, aside from us. And so that's what I'm hoping that will happen. And whatever we can do to encourage that kind of conversation is, public, public conversation would be something we ought to encourage them toward. I think that's the only thing I wanted to say about it. Right now, I'm just a little disappointed that, well, we passed this thing last October twenty-eighth, that's half a year ago, or more about, and we haven't seen EYA move a dot on that map yet, on that plan, have we? I mean, material stuff? That's concerning.
Mayor, I'd be interested in hearing Ms. Porter, who's graciously joined us, if she has anything to say about her opinion of the best way for the city of Tacoma Park to express its position in an effective manner.
And maybe if I can ask you first to just say a couple sentences about a nice, quick little summary of the compact hearing, what, the reason for the compact hearing, and kind of the length of time that the process takes, because it has multiple parts to it.
The main purpose of the compact public hearing is to look at the impact of the development of transit facilities. And so I would, I would say that, to the extent that you can link your concerns to transit issues, I think it would, it would make them more powerful. Although, I would note that the change that, in the resolution that the Womata committee made at the request of the council that was brought to us by Seth, did note that the, this public, compact public hearing, unlike most, would accept non-transit-related comments, and would forward them on to the district entity that is putting on the PUD. So it is, there's a little bit more latitude and leeway in this one than there would normally be. But the compact public hearing basically is the, the way Womata looks at it, and I have to keep reiterating that this is not a typical process for them, is that the first, the first step, which is the joint development agreement, normally for Womata, that's about money and about nothing else. Most of the, most of the projects that they have, they're just working out the, you know, the negotiations about who gets paid what and for how much. Normally, there is not the same kinds of issues that there is in this one. And so they normally don't think of those kinds of things. And the compact public hearing then talks about the development and how that would affect the transit facilities. And in some cases, it's fairly cut and dried. In this case, obviously, it is not. And then, if there are zoning issues, or building issues, or design issues, those are normally dealt with by the jurisdiction in which the development is going to occur. In this case, it would be the District of Columbia. And that would, that would be what the plan unit development, the PUD process would be about. So those are sort of the steps that Womata would normally do in a, in a development situation like this. As I said, I think this is, this is not at all typical for the kinds of things that they do. That most of the stuff that Womata deals with, development next to a metro station, it's in a, it's in an industrial area, it's in a commercial area, where they're just looking to, you know, put up an office building, or, you know, a parking garage, and those, and you don't have the same kinds of issues with proximity to residential areas, you don't have the same issues with, you know, building in an already built-up community. A lot of the issues that are, that are very essential in this particular situation don't exist in most of the, in most of the compact public hearing situations that Womata deals with. So this is, is very unusual, and a lot of the, a lot of the things, I think they're sort of figuring it out as they go along.
And my recollection of the last time that we went through the compact hearing, it was a, that was kind of the first step in the process of the Womata Board coming to a resolution about deciding what, if any, transit impact there was, and it involved a number of steps with the Federal Transit Administration, with any federal historic piece that goes in, that feeds into that FTA. And so there are those pieces that make this, so that Womata doesn't kind of conclude the compact hearing process with a resolution until a couple of months down the road.
Basically, well, this is very different than the previous one, because the previous proposal for development at the metro would have drastically altered the transit facilities. It would have shrunk the bus area, it would have shrunk the parking area. There were major, major changes to the transit facilities.
And that was always the focus of most of our comments for that process.
Yes, the focus of the city's comments at that point was access by the people of Tacoma Park being impaired because of the major changes they were making in the transit facilities, to the detriment of people getting access to the metro station. That was basically the issue. In this particular situation, since they're not talking about major changes to the transit facilities, I think that that's, that will be, that piece of it would be less complicated. My understanding is that after the compact public hearing, the staff then takes all the testimony and analyzes it, puts it together. As I said, this is very different from most of the types of development Womata does, so I haven't, I haven't seen one like this. But normally, what they do is they gather all the information together, and they analyze it, and they put together a report that says, you know, this is what people thought about this, and this is what people thought about that, and that sort of thing. And then the board votes to accept the here, accept the report and the analysis by the staff, or not.
So there's, so there's basically a staff recommendation that comes back in the form of a resolution?
I'm not sure it's a recommendation. As I said, this is very different from the normal types of joint developments that Womata does. My understanding is that they will come back with an analysis of the comments, and how those comments bear on the, on the transit facilities issues that are being dealt with as part of the development.
And how does the board decide which comments are important? Is it fiscal impact? Is it?
My understanding is that they will include and analyze all of the comments. I don't know what their analysis will be. As I said, I haven't ever, I've never seen a process, you know, from the Womata end that they've gone through that has been like this. Most of them are not.
Does the, does that process end by coming back directly to the board, or does it go to a committee first?
I don't know the answer to that. Most things that go to the board go to a committee first, so that would be my guess, that it would go to the Planning and Real Estate Committee. That would be my guess, because that would be unusual.
If it went to a committee, it would be that committee, and it would usually go to a committee. So, was there something else you wanted to, did that answer your question, or was there, did your question go beyond what the discussion was?
No.
No.
The original question, Seth, I thought it was yours.
I, I asked, I asked Ms. Porter's suggestions and, yes.
Okay.
Well, I, I guess the, the two suggestions I would have, one is to the extent that you can link it to the transit issues. I think it will make it more on point. But I would, I mean, I would put any issues that you're concerned about in there, you know, because of your suggestions before the, the topic got somewhat broadened in this particular instance. So I would, I mean, I think the, the one thing that we learned from our previous experience is that you have to keep making your points. I think the situation that we had the last time was that it was always too early to make the points until it was too late. And I think you don't want to do that.
We, we do have lots of stuff that relates to transit that also relates to design. For instance, a lot of residents are concerned about the reduction in transit user parking spaces from, the number is never quite fixed, 150 to 95 or something like that. The reduction in parking spaces for transit users will mean fewer people using the station. That's an argument that, that we can make in our testimony. Similarly, some people, including myself, but not everyone believes there's an oversupply of residential parking. That's a design element in the building, of the residential portion of the building. But the argument is that if you have more residential parking spaces, then you will invite people into the building to live there who will be less likely to use transit. So there are plenty of arguments that we can make that relate to transit that are both transit and building design questions. And I'll just say that the number of residential parking spaces is going to be related to the bulk of the building, which is our biggest concern. Because if you have fewer residential parking spaces, then you can shift the apartments around and so on.
Yes. But, but having said that, the second part of what I said is that if there's something that concerns you, I would bring it up.
You mentioned that these other areas where Womata does development or industrial or, they're less developed.
Right. Generally.
Right. What issues come up that the board would address in that type of process?
I'm trying to remember. There's issues, there's always arguments about, you know, if the development is going to take the place of existing parking, whether the parking's going to be replaced and what form it's going to be replaced. If there's an issue of bus bays being taken out, you know, what, how is that going to be replaced? There's issues of, sometimes an adjoining development will want its own entrance to the station or will have to go over a road or over the train tracks, you know? So there's, there's entrance issues from a, you know, if a, if a hotel or an office building wants to be adjacent to metro and they want to have some kind of a bridge or something, then there's issues about how it's going to connect to the station. Those are the kinds of things that I can think about. They're not usually this kind of thing.
Right. But those things that you mentioned, the board usually does have some type of statement, comment, some way that they would fix that rather than just saying, "We're not going to deal with it."
The, the board tends not to directly deal with things like that. There will usually be a document or something like, or it may end up, the, the contract has not been signed yet and the contract will not be signed until the process goes through. And so sometimes those end up in the, in the contract with the developer. But generally, the kinds of things that metro would be, would specify would be, if you are taking out metro, if you are removing metro facilities, they have to be replaced and they have to be replaced under these kinds of specs. Or if you're trying to make another entrance into the station, it has to meet these specifications.
I'm just trying to get a sense of, I mean, like you said, this is completely new. Womata hasn't seen anything like this. Are they even going to seriously consider these concerns? If they've never done it before, how do they even begin to address it?
The, I think the way, I mean, I have, I have spoken to some of my colleagues on the board because I think many of them didn't sort of understand why this was coming up before the board at all. They're, and some of them are sort of saying, "Well, you know, we don't do that, we don't deal with that, the jurisdiction deals with that." And that's sort of the way that they generally deal with it, is these kinds of design issues are for the jurisdiction to decide, not for Womata to decide. You know, we say, you know, "You pay us X for the land and, you know, we want to make sure that, you know, we end up with the same amount of parking and we end up with, you know, places where the buses can go. And if you're going to try and make another entrance, you've got to do it in a way that doesn't mess up our station." But beyond that, issues beyond that, they say, are the, are the purview of the jurisdiction in which the development is occurring. And I know that there are instances where there have been a lot of discussions within that, within those jurisdictions about some of the developments. But they haven't come to the board.
Okay. Have either of the mayoral candidates weighed in on this project?
Well, Muriel Bowser is actually on the board.
Right.
She represents the district council on the board. And she, you know, has been involved in this all the way through. And I, and I will say that at the board, the, the board meeting at which this was decided, she made some very helpful comments. And I would, if I were you, take her up on that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Schultz.
Couple of questions. First, would, would issues such as the, the impact on Ethan, on Eastern Avenue with the, meaning that that's the main entrance for the cars, vehicles coming in, whether they be residential, you know, people that live on the premises or, or users of the transit would be coming in off of Eastern Avenue, that trash trucks and moving trucks and all the other functionalities would be using Eastern as, as a point of entry onto the property? Would those, those kinds of discussions fall into the transportation rubric that you, that Womata wants to focus on?
When, Womata's specifically interested in transit issues.
Yeah.
Not necessarily all transportation issues. And, you know, access to the station might very well be an issue that they would be interested in, yes. But I don't know if the, the issue of particular kinds of vehicles. I mean, I guess my general advice to you is if there's a concern that you have, I would, I would state it.
If I may, let's not forget that metro buses use the surrounding residential streets and if there's additional congestion or issues with driveways and so on, those points will affect metro buses.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I can sort of see where it, that does impact transit. You know? The, the other question that I have is, is the compact hearing, the way you envision it, what you envision it being about, is that at an appropriate time for other, other elected people, such as the Montgomery County Executive's Office or members of the Montgomery County Council who represent this, this area of the county, to involve themselves in providing written or oral testimony?
I don't, I don't think it would hurt. I don't even, you know, the, I couldn't even tell you which board members are going to be the compact public hearing. I will be, but I don't even know what other board members will be there. I imagine there will be somebody there. But I do remember the previous compact public hearing, there's only one board member there. So, but again, I guess I, I would say the same thing. If there's, if there are people who have a concern, people who want to say something or make a particular point, I would say that, you know, they should, they should be there.
Yeah. Well, yeah, generally speaking, more warm bodies, the better. Generally speaking, the, the more officials that you can get there expressing their concerns, the better. It's never, you can never literally have too much of that. I mean, the people who are listening may think it's too much, but the people who are testifying should never think of it as being too much. And so that's something for us also to think about.
And I, and I do notice that they have, they have allotted quite a long time for the public hearing, something like five hours.
Five hours, yeah. That sounds like a real fun time.
So I would, I would, I would say that they probably do anticipate that there will be a fair amount of interest in this.
My recollection is there were something like 110 people who testified at the last round? Does that sound right?
At least, there's a lot. Yeah. I don't have a microphone.
It was, the, the last time, the, the previous public hearing on this, the first iteration of the development, it did go very long. And I, and I do remember we had several members of the city council testify. And I, if I remember what we did at that point, is we sort of decided what we wanted to say and divvied it up. And so, you know, one person said this, somebody else said this, somebody else said this and somebody else said that. So I'm not, you know, if, if you choose to do that, that would be fine. That's, we've, I can't remember why we thought that was a good idea, but it, it worked pretty well.
Public, public officials, elected officials do get five minutes to testify. I certainly wouldn't want to abuse that, but that's more than members of the public get.
Yes. Yes. And I think that may have been the other thing. That was the way that we got in all of our points within the time limits that we had, is that we divvied it up among the council members.
And in instances like that, I always like to try and, if the public gets three and officials get five, I like to try and do three. Councilmember Seaman, did you have something or are you just making noise?
No, I haven't been listening gently. And I'll, I'll listen to that.
We can't tell what you're saying.
I have nothing now.
Okay. Thanks. As, a point that Councilmember Schultz was getting at, I wonder, I wonder if it's worth trying to make any points about traffic studies around the site and the effect on the access to transit? Or is, or are people going to be feeling like, gee, we did a traffic study, you're beating a dead horse?
Well, I guess-
I, I'm not, I'm not saying that I agree that their traffic study was what was needed, but I'm thinking about their reaction to going there.
I, I guess what, what I would go back to is if there's something that you think is important, that I would encourage you to say it.
Other council questions or comments? Thank you.
Okay.
What I'm tempted to say is that we probably want to take a look at this, the, the existing resolution from last October, think about how we can focus it on both access to transit and other issues that we want to cover, see if there's anything that we want to add to it, see if there's anything that we want to kind of group, the, the points that we want to make, and how many of us will be there to testify and how we might want to divvy up that testimony and make suggestions to staff, take staff suggestions about how we can structure this.
Yeah, if I might. If, if, a normal process for something like this is that, you know, we take the information in the previous resolution, recognizing that, you know, obviously some time has passed since that was adopted, but give some identification of the points to be made in the testimony. If you're looking at several different people, you know, and how you wanted to divvy it up, I think you may have to just, among yourselves, figure that, some of that out. If you want one particular one, that's kind of a summary one from the mayor that represents the city, I'm happy to draft that. It's a little bit awkward if, if each person wants to take a different piece. I just need to be told what you want me to do with any or all of that.
And we, and we need to know who's interested in testifying. Maybe just a preliminary sense right now of those who might be interested in attending and testifying, besides myself and Councilmember Grimes?
I'll be there, but I won't testify.
Okay.
Might be.
I could testify, but I'd like to just listen.
Okay. So it sounds like potentially two of us, potentially four of us, potentially.
Well, what's the, do you recall, is this going to be videotaped by Womata or not?
I don't know, but I did give a heads up to our city TV to be available to do it.
Yeah, that's where I was going.
We did the last, at the last compact hearing, we had them there and that was how it was recorded.
Yeah, I, that would be great.
And does anybody recall whether elected officials go first?
Yes. According to Womata paperwork here, yes.
So, is there anything that isn't in this previous resolution that anybody has identified that feels we should include?
There, there are a few factual things that have changed, but I can work with Ms. Ludlow on that. The number of parking units has been reduced, for instance, and so on.
Okay. But the, so that's updates to existing points, but is there any other point that isn't covered in here?
Well, there was, there were Ms. Pierceall's points about federal review for the historic district, given the spanning the border and stuff like that. Is that matter for the compact hearing or not? I don't know. The inconsistency with central district plan she raised is another point. Again, is that a matter for the, do you have something you want to say?
Yeah. I think it's important to realize you're setting a record to, for what can come afterward and a lot of, there are a lot of possibilities of, you know, what can come after this. There's, yes, this is very unique. You heard Kathy say how unusual this is. It's extremely unusual because they're dealing with two historic districts here, national register historic districts. They have never had to focus on this and they are still not. They are sidestepping it. They did it the last time. They are not getting away with doing it again. There is, this is different. They're not used to this. It's unique. So, yes, please set a record on this. And go back and read what, the work that we did on this. And I'm happy to meet with you to discuss it in more detail, but these are really very important points for protecting our neighborhood. And so we keep talking about PUD processes and local processes, but what we're forgetting is that there is a federal process here. And, and that has been totally just ignored. And so please, yes, you know, set a record here for what will come later. And I don't know what that is, but something, you know, who knows? So thanks.
So the deputy city manager maybe could work with the city attorney to evaluate these points for inclusion.
Sure. I, I would like to just, some of the folks here on the dais were not involved with the central district plan, but that did incorporate the concept of having the townhouses on the site. So that's just for your information.
Move in.
Okay. So, why don't I consult with staff about what we might need to do to kind of consider maybe a, a new resolution? We'll, we'll come up with a draft that kind of moves some pieces around and see the best way to do it. We'll, we'll put it out for some review and we would be, we would be getting back to it on the-
Sixteenth, June. You're Ocean City on the ninth.
It sounds like that's-
I think that, I think that frankly, the, the testimony may be the strongest thing unless there's this, unless there is, as this goes forward, a substantive different point that is not in this resolution.
Right, right. We'll see if maybe we can come up with something, yeah, we'll, we'll try and come up with something in the next week? So we'll, we'll come up with something and if we need to do anything, it'll, we'll try and bring it up next week for further direction. We don't have any additional agenda items this evening, so we're adjourned. We don't have any additional agenda items this evening, so we're adjourned.
Love it, love it, love it!